Call the council meeting to order, please. Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and where it is just as well.
Thank you very much. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Nordby is absent. Councilmember Woods?
Here.
Councilmember McKenzie?
Here.
Councilmember Schwer?
Here.
Mayor Mungy?
Here. Thank you very much. You got a motion to adopt the agenda, please.
So moved.
So moved. Councilmember Schwer?
Second.
Second. Councilmember McKenzie. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. Presentations.
All right. We have two this evening. I want to start off with Tom Spence this evening. Tom, if you could come on up, we'd sure appreciate it.
Bring your family, too? Oh, come on. No? We all know that behind every man's boss.
You got that right.
Well, Tom, I really appreciate you coming here tonight. This is really just to honor you and recognize you for all the work you've done in the city. What, it's been 15 years you've been doing?
It has been 15 years. No, 17.
17 years.
Because I believe our first house was a 2008, 2009 academic school year.
Okay.
And we've done 15 houses. Would have been a few more, but COVID came into play. So, one less. And then one year, thanks to the city, we had a household lined up, but then, well, you're aware of what happens when you try to transfer a title of property, doesn't go always as planned, and so there was a delay. And then the city said, hey, you want to build some park shelters and do our baseball press box? And so we kept going. And that was kind of a fun project to do. And so thank you for those opportunities. Even when things were difficult, you guys stepped up and helped us. So that was awesome.
You've done just such an amazing amount of work in this city and improved these neighborhoods, you know, getting rid of some of the blight and, I mean, increasing value of the houses around them. And even besides just the houses themselves, your ability to work with those kids, with the city, with, you know, just the contractors that we have working around here. You're just such a well-rounded person. I really wanted to see what they were going to come up with to try to replace somebody like you. And it kind of worked out, unfortunately, but you're a hard man to replace.
Well, you know, double-edged sword on that one. You know, it's an honor, and sometimes it's challenging. There's been conversations about St. Paul College taking it over. And, you know, to respect St. Paul College, they did not want to step in until they knew for sure the 9/16 was going to step out. They didn't want to come in and take anything over until it was okay. So I give St. Paul College a lot of credit for that. And St. Paul College has been working with the city for quite a few years. They have a wonderful cabinet-making program, and it's an opportunity for their students to do a capstone project, design the cabinets, build the cabinets, finish the cabinets, come out and install the cabinets. So it's one of their highlight programs as well. So now hopefully with the company program stepping in to take over, a very competent instructor at the college level, he is a general contractor himself. So I feel very confident that he can take over for the program. And then they can work together on a collaborative effort with the city of North St. Paul and keep moving forward. I mean, I give St. Paul a lot of credit, North St. Paul a lot of credit. A lot of cities sit and complain about depleting housing stock, and what are we going to do, and how do we address these things? And you guys, gals, are very active in saying, hey, let's do this. Let's look at, identify our distressed properties. And let's do something about that. And let's obtain those properties that are unfit for habitation. They're not feasible to fix up anymore. Let's take care of them, remove them. Deal with any asbestos issues the correct and legal way. And then we'll provide a building pad, and we'll have somebody come in and build the house. And our goal is not to make money. Our goal is to break even and basically, you know, replenish our depleting housing stock. And so I commend the city for that.
That and the education that you give the kids, that they bring onto the workforce and make a career out of if they want to.
Yes, I was talking earlier to Dave and shared with me your son's story.
My son started in 97 with Connie Bones. It was one of the first classes where at that time they were going out and home building. My son would get out of school at 10:00 a.m. out of North. He'd get his truck and he'd go to wherever the job site was where they were framing and building homes. He'd go to Plymouth, he'd go to Chaska, Chanhassen, Lake Elmo, still wherever they were at. And that's how we learned to build houses. And right now he's a job superintendent for a major construction company.
Yep. Great future.
Yeah.
That's nice we could have it here. Instead of having him travel all over the place, being able to do it right here locally was really a blessing.
Logistically, it worked out so well for us to partner with North St. Paul.
Right down the road. Also our team back there, once you guys swing up, too. Come on. Because you know what? You guys work just as hard. Yep. I mean, you guys work great together. I mean, that was something when it came to the foundations and being able to do the work together. So I know you had a great team as the city along with it, too. So question, what was your favorite house you did? Anyone you can think of?
Always the first one.
Always the first one?
Always the first house.
How about the worst one that gave you the most headaches? Your house?
The one Ron helped me on. No, just kidding.
If there's anything that stood out.
Every house is unique.
Yes.
And every house has specific challenges. And I would say a few years ago, we were kind of in a tough situation dealing in a community with a lot of needs. And to accomplish that and get the respect of the community, I think, was probably the biggest tribute.
Yeah. And that's what I've always heard, is the houses fit in, they look so good. I just talked to you, you just went to the one you have right across from Webster, and it looks like that house has been there forever, the way it fits in that crazy lot. I mean, we looked over that lot. I think there's a few times it was like, wow, we really can't do anything on that lot. Well, we're able to, you know, take a piece that we had there and be able, and the house looked great.
Yeah.
So, you know, you're...
You know, I worked on that one for a few hours and tried to come up with a not plan and kind of broke apart a little bit. It's because we needed to go our separate ways as far as planning stuff, and then we come back together with some other plans. And, you know, it's so easy to be cynical. But working with the city, which is so supportive, and then that again is probably something I'm trying to stress more than anything, is working with Ron and Randy and the city and the mayor and the council and HRA. It's been really good. And I've been out and talked with other schools about this partnership, and other schools are trying to mimic this, which is great, and I'm helping, like Stillwater wanted to mimic this as well, but they can't do it with their setup on their periods of high school classes, so it can't be done. But we're going to keep pursuing other, you know, schools that want to partner with us.
All their cities, too. The mayor of Maplewood, she's always threatening to try to steal you. She always told me, we need that program for her. I said, oh, that's ours.
Like going to Hill Murray.
That's right. You're definitely, definitely noticed, and you've left your mark in North St. Paul for all these houses and all, you know, what you did for the city, so.
And also Connie Bones, who started the program back in 97.
Yes.
And you were part of that with Brad Holmes, you said.
That's how I got started. I was the first mentor in the youth apprenticeship program. And after two years of that, the builders said, you know, it's a great program, but we probably need to get some kind of a class upfronts so they can learn some of the basic arduity measures.
Right, exactly.
So they thought they should probably start a construction occupations program.
That's what they did at Centry.
And that's what they hired me to do. And so I came from the industry. So I have 17 years in the trades before I started teaching. And I always look back at my daughter, who was six months old when I started teaching, when she was 26. I was going to weekend college. My wife was going to weekend college. It was like three years of a blur or go on the... So when a kid said, I can't get the assignment done, it's like, oh, we ain't buying that one. Because we were both full-time employed.
Sure.
And both going to weekend colleges to pursue degrees to enhance our career.
Yeah. And I love going to the open houses. The kids are so excited. They're running around, look what I did over here, mom and dad. They're showing everybody, you know, the work they did. It's just the pride. I mean, it was, it's very, you know, you sit back there like a fly on the wall, and you look at these running around and showing all the work they did. So it's definitely a blessing.
This year's house is going well. So we're pretty much done trimming on the inside. Flooring, trying to get that scheduled to go in next week and keep moving on that schedule. On the exterior, we've got a little siding to wrap up in the front deck. I still plan on having that mostly done by our last day of school, which is June 6.
Okay.
Nice.
Awesome.
And then landscaping, typically Randy deals with that a lot. Schedules add in. And then there's some scheduling issues to do, so end of June, we want to put that on the market and have the open house again.
Well, the student build are hot commodities. They sell quickly around here. There's a reputation, the quality, so.
That's good.
Definitely great. Well, we want to grab some...
Tom, you mentioned, you use the word mentor, and I think that's important that you recognize that you've been a huge mentor to all these students. And you have instilled your work ethic into themselves. And something that, a takeaway for you is that you have hundreds of students that you have mentored, and you have put them in a better place, and they will forever remember your name.
Thank you.
Definitely.
I still run into some of these, like, I always call them kids, but they're like 40-some years. And they will remind me of that one house we built, you know, that's on Highway, or excuse me, off of 694 in McKnight. And the kid, I drive by that every day, and I tell my wife, I built that house when I was in high school. Wife's like, yeah, I've been hearing this story. So it is an impact that we all have as a community on all the children that we raise in our village, if you want to say that.
Yep.
Yeah.
The opportunity was there, and I was just blessed to be able to help these kids out, just kind of find their passion. And like with your son, he found his niche in high school, and that's awesome. He didn't wander through college trying to find himself. He knew exactly what he wanted to do. So I'm glad we were able to be part of that.
Yeah. It is a blessing.
Well, thank you so much. Our residents are going to miss it as well. I will say those open houses, they look forward to every year.
Now that I'm retired, I plan on using your bike trail here.
Hey, it's a good one.
Still be there.
I know we have a presentation, and we'd like to get a couple pictures. I know your wife is going to be taking pictures, and can you do it, too, please? Hold, council, let's go down.
Oh, wow. Thank you. That is heavy.
It's in there tight. I'll hold on to the top if you want to pull out the bottom.
Fight for it.
Greatest snowman I've ever seen.
Everybody just turn around. You, too. Come on, everybody. Yeah, you go behind. Can you see us all? Congratulations. Thank you again. Appreciate everything.
Let's get a few more with Tom.
Oh, you need one?
Tom, did you want? What? You should come up here.
Nope. Get up here.
You supported it.
Come on, daughter.
Okay, we're scooting over.
I usually put my camera on Tom in these pictures.
Thank you.
All right, thanks again. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you, Brian. Thank you very much for the support. Always fun to work with you, Randy. Ron is fun to work with, too.
Ron, it's all right.
See a preference there?
All right.
Thank you very much.
We have a proclamation for Memorial Day. So, whereas Memorial Day is a solemn occasion dedicated to honoring and remembering the brave men and women of the United States Armed Forces who have made the ultimate sacrifice in service to our country. And whereas this day of remembrance originated after the Civil War and has grown to include all American military personnel who have died in all wars and conflicts. And whereas the people of the state of Minnesota and the city of North St. Paul hold deep gratitude to the valor, courage, and sacrifice of these heroes and are committed to preserving their memory. And whereas Memorial Day also serves as an opportunity for our community to come together in reflection, unity, and support for the families of the fallen and all those who have served or continue to serve in the armed forces. And whereas we encourage residents of North St. Paul to observe this day with reverence, to attend commemorative events, and to honor our fallen heroes by displaying the American flag at half-staff until noon, as is customary. Now therefore, John Mungy, mayor for the city of North St. Paul, Minnesota, does hereby proclaim Monday, May 26, 2025, as Memorial Day in North St. Paul, and urge all residents to join in honoring the memory of our nation's fallen service members.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate you reading it.
Sure.
Next time they vote, they vote for one that doesn't have dyslexia, maybe.
All right. Next up is our consent agenda. So, item A, May 6, 2025, workshop and regular meeting minutes. Item B, general claims of $1,850,345.90. Item C, HRA claims of $40,620.28. Item D, acceptance of the 2024 financial reports that were audited by the city's audit firm of LB Carlson LLP. Item E, resolution accepting donations for April of 2025. Item F, building permit reports for April of 2025. Item G, approve consumption and display permit for the Gargertos. Item H, gambling premises permit, Waper Avenue Business Association. Item I, tree brush grinding and removal services. Item J, Ramsey County Sheriff Emergency Response Teams Joint Powers Agreement. Item K, MetroInet Memorandum of Understanding Regarding Data Center and Agreement. And item L, Management Services Agreement between the city of North St. Paul and Triple Crown batting cages.
Thank you, Brian. Would anybody like to pull any at this time?
I'd like to pull item J. The Ramsey County Sheriff Emergency Response Teams.
Okay. If nothing else, can I get a motion to adopt the agenda, please?
So moved.
So moved. Councilmember Schwer?
Second.
Second. Councilmember... I was going to say, Norby.
I thought you were going to say Wong.
Exactly. We're going back in old habits. McKenzie, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. All right. Going to move that one up, then?
All right, move that to business. So we'll go to open to the public.
Open to the public at 6:47. Dennis Bartholomew? Name and address, please.
Bartholomew. Which one do you want? 2308 East 10th Avenue, Triple Crown?
Okay.
Or 2050 North Margaret's? I came up here today because I hear the agenda where we had Triple Crown with that management agreement. I think that's passed, right? Okay. There was one issue that I didn't hear come up, and that has to do with the fact that when we went through this, I had to fill out a tax exemption because Ramsey County came in and assessed me property taxes. And the reason was because the management agreement that was drawn up by the city was done wrong. It told Ramsey County this was now a commercial building. And it's a public use facility, which it had been since all this time. And reaffirmed back in 2010 with Victoria Reinhardt and the city of North St. Paul. Due to the fact that there were things missing in that contract that we did in 2023, part of it saying that I'm the leasing, I'm not a leasing, I'm the contractor. So I got hit with first half taxes. Now, I went to them and the county commissioner, Kelly Miller, and her staff agreed 100%. They said, here's what has to be done. And we had, we had a nice conference call between Dave and Ryan, and them, and they explained the procedure, what we have to do. I had to file with the tax court. That's the only way you can stop those proceedings from going through. Basically, I had to pay the first half taxes to Ramsey County. The tax court filing, which I did, stops that after they have it. And then they will give you a date down the road. They have basically intercepted and said, you're not going to have to do that. Get this thing done, and we will reimburse you for that money. The issue I had was that I had to pay $170 for the tax court. I had no choice. If I didn't file with the tax court, I would then have to pay taxes for the full year. They said, there's nothing we can do that's in the law. But since I paid it, we held it up. Now, I went down there and we spent over two hours filing this, basically doing the application with the people who do it. Took over two hours. And they had to make calls to the courthouse and that to make sure they had things right. I asked them, I said, how does a normal person do this if they had to? And they said, you got to get a tax lawyer. And I said, well, that's got to be expensive, a thousand dollars or more. They said, try two or three. I said, no kidding. But they, to give them credit, walked me through and basically did the whole thing for me. Because I, nobody, nobody would understand that. So we saved that kind of money. All I'm asking is that $170 had nothing to do with me and any mistake I made, that I'd be reimbursed for that by the city. So anybody got questions regarding that?
No, but thank you for speaking, and it's something that Ryan and the council can talk about.
Okay. I thought it might have been talked about, but I want, that's why I came up tonight. I wanted to make sure that we discuss that, so.
Thank you.
And I've got, and I've got from the Ramsey County, it shows that they have already changed this from a commercial building to a public use building. So that's already filed and everything.
Okay.
So they're just waiting for that. So I appreciate that. Now I think you got to get done so we can watch the Timberwolves.
There you go.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that's it. 6:52 closed to public.
All right, so city business action items. Item A will be what was pulled down for the SWAT arrangement agreement.
I just wanted to, I just would like a little more clarification about this, because it seems like this is going up from $5,000 to $12,000 a year. And, you know, I guess my take on it is, how many times have we needed the service? It seems like it's a, like we're buying into a membership for something on the off chance that it's something that we might need in the long term. So my concern is, is this money that we need to be spending for this in, you know, on the off chance that we need the service? It's, you know, it seems like a lot of, you know, $5,000 is one thing. When it's more than doubling, it becomes kind of questionable, I guess, in my mind. So I guess I'd like to, I don't know how this works. If it goes up for, I don't know what the thought is. Yeah.
Start with.
Yeah.
Their claim was that Ramsey County had held the $5,000 fee there probably longer than they should have, that their costs were going up higher than what they were asking the participants to, that are in it, to pay. Yes, it is random. I mean, hopefully you don't ever have to have them called out. We've had it called out a couple of times when Phil was here. We had those kids that stole that vehicle and drove through our city at high speed, ended up crashing in another city, but then after that, they were having gatherings of the public that were...
So it's almost like your retainer.
Well, yeah, I mean...
So we'll, we'll pay this, but, you know, you could help us out if we, if we need it type of thing is kind of what it looks like, huh?
Yeah. And semi-similar, you know, we have the BCA that can come in and help out during certain situations. But that's a state deal. We don't pay for that. But, you know, we have participation in it. Yeah, you hope you don't get it. But, you know, besides serving as the ability of having those services come in and them having to send you an invoice, even if they do or not. But a small city like us that don't have a lot of room of growth, I mean, these little opportunities kind of help out with the officers being able to kind of expand their wings a little bit and be involved in other, I don't know, aspects of their job, you know, and we do things like the pilots for the drone program. And, you know, small cities like us don't have a lot of stepping stones. You can go to sergeant, but then there's chief. Not that that is why we do this, but it is certainly something that helps out the staff as well.
Training, learning opportunities for...
Indeed.
Force. Okay, fair enough.
So that's just bringing more resource, training resources.
It does. And I believe we have four people in there that participate in that.
So it's not them helping us, like I thought, that I was mistaken. It's the training part of it.
No, no, I mean, it is certainly them helping us out when needed. I mean...
They're automatic calls when we're in crisis situations.
Then you were talking about trains, I thought, well, maybe I was misunderstanding.
That was kind of a side note.
Oh, okay. All right. So that's pretty much to help them, okay.
Yep. And we have had...
Is it a straight for everybody? Or does it go by population or the fee? Everybody does the same?
I asked Ray that today, and he told me that is a straight fee for the cities, yes.
Okay.
Do we use them for last May?
Last May? No. That was BCA that came in.
Okay.
But we have had people secure themselves in their houses to where we've had to bring them out. And actually, the house right next to the current student built had issue there that SWAT came out on. So we've had them intermittently here and there.
Went down there on South.
Yeah.
But that's a valid question and reason why you pulled it. I think, yeah.
Are you good with? Are you good with?
Yeah.
Okay. If you're good with them, let's just vote on it, so.
And they did bring up to the, the timing wasn't great, uh, that we need more notice than what was given here because, I mean, we follow our budgeting and try to plan ahead with this stuff. So, um, there was feedback to the sheriff as well, so.
So they wouldn't budge for the remainder of the year? They?
Yeah, it was kind of a last minute deal that they, and going forward, they won't be doing that. They'll give us that consideration, which will be nice.
Okay.
Okay. All right. If no other questions, can I get a motion for?
So moved.
So move. Councilmember Woods?
Second.
Second. Councilmember Norby?
Norby.
McKenzie?
Oh, boy.
You did pretty good. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. Poor Norby. He's, he's going to think, I didn't even take the day off. I'm mentioning my name more than everybody else.
All right. So reports from city manager and departments. Uh, we had a staff meeting today. PD has been, uh, they're doing interviews, I believe, that for today, which will hopefully get us to full staff, full complement of staff, um, once we get all these on. We still have, uh, one person that's about halfway through their field training. And bringing on this one more will get us up to full staff once they get through all their training. We have our new detective that is on, been on for a couple of weeks now. He's doing well, according to Ray, and, uh, picking up the, where others left off. We have the new CSO that started, uh, what, last week? And, uh, so Brendan's been training her. Brendan will be up for taking his post here, uh, within a couple, a week or so. And then hopefully pull him on by the early June to be an officer. So looking forward to that. He's, he's really good compliment for the department. Electric's been busy with their getting, um, the conduit in for up there at the road reconstruction project. They've got most all of that in now, except for road crossings, and they'll get them in when the road is dug up. Uh, we did get our wire in finally for the 17th in Delaware, so they'll be resuming that work that they've started up there, um, more than a year ago. They're also putting in some, doing some work at Target so that we can do a loop feed to the Target building. Right now it's a radio feed, so that will be a nice addition for such a big load.
Feed, radio feed. You gotta say it now. I gotta know what's.
Oh, I'm sorry. So if you have just a transformer that goes straight out and feeds, um, a business or a resident, well, if that gets, uh, broken somehow or interrupted, that is the only feed for it. So now you have to fix that to get them back on. Well, loop feed, they're fed from two different directions. So if this goes down, you can just feed from the other direction and it causes much shorter power outages to help them out. So.
All right.
Have you had any power outages during this high wind session at all, you know?
Uh, yes, and that was mixed up here. So we got, um, we've been doing pretty good with these storms. We've had a couple of, uh, big limbs or trees come down on services. Uh, we've had just a couple of small outages. Our biggest outage was somebody trying to tree trim and the tree went the wrong way, so.
No kidding.
That was a week and a half ago. Not them. Thank.
How he talks back there. Look at him.
Uh, we, I have Electric working with, uh, Zayo, um, trying to get some fiber to the housy there. So that'll be part of, um, the new lock system that we're going to be looking at to help with that and also for get some security cameras out there. We don't have them now. And then talked about the storms. And of course, finance has been busy with this audit and now we're kicking off the budgets and getting moving on that. Uh, community development, we have Sarah's been out for the last week and a half. She got married, so they're picking up the. Yeah, slack on that. And then, um, working on new, uh, policy updates, um, with Ken and having him update some of the ordinances that we had issues with and been working with Jack on. Fire department's been busy with, they have some training and then they've had their new engine. It looks like they got about eight week delivery times. They're hoping for mid-July to have that new fire truck. Working on code enforcement issues right now seems to be the tall grass for no mo may.
Get worse.
Yeah. So, yeah, especially with all the rain. And they're actually at a very high roster point. Uh, they're about 39. They haven't been that high in many years. So they've been having more people start on, um, the department, so that's good for them. Public Works, they've been, of course, busy helping 916 with the, uh, student build program. He already went over where the house is at. Cleanup day went pretty well. We're going to look at ways to streamline that. We're going to actually bring that back to you guys and have a discussion on ways we can improve on that and get your guys' input on that as well, um, probably at the next workshop. Did the concrete work down there in front of Article 7. Um, that's blocked off now, but they'll have that open up, what, come Thursday? So be ready. It was just damaged from some of the heavy equipment that they had working around there, so they had to replace it. They just didn't want to do it last fall, so it was there for the snowplow season, but. And a couple of, what else is left? We have a, a little bit of patching on some of the asphalt on the backside on Sepulveda. What else we got?
There's also some warranty stuff that, you know, we have to wait for clients and did the punch list on catch base and the stuff, but the most part, the big stuff.
There are seasonal staffing. They got three more workers started this week. So won't be long, they'll be able to get out and do some patching on the road, get some potholes taken care of. And we're looking at street restruct, uh, reconstruction starting, uh, around June 1st. So contractors will be in town, they'll start digging the place up. So progress, progress. That's all I got for you.
Thank you very much. Commissions, committees.
Parks and Recreation had their cleanup days. Uh, I unfortunately was unable to attend, but I, um, understand that Troy was able to attend, so maybe he can speak to it. But I believe it was a very good success. A couple of community members that I know had said that they seen people out in the parks and thought it was neat that we were doing that. Uh, next meeting is next Wednesday at 6:30 here in Council Chambers.
Awesome. Thank you.
Uh, the EDA meets in June 10th coming up and we're going to further up the city facial program.
Thank you very much.
Um, the Arts and Culture Commission met, uh, just after our last meeting on the 7th and just talked through everything, um, just continuing to make progress on all the projects going on, the classes going on at, uh, for the art projects as well as the, um, they're going to do our call for artists actually yesterday, um, for the Historical Society mural on the west side of the building there. So hopefully that will get done. Uh, the plan is to review the artists and decide by the end of this month and then mid-next month, notify everybody that who's doing it, what it's going to be and everything, so. Um, and then as far as the park cleanup, it, it did go well. Um, I went to Northwood Park and, um, it sounds like the Public Works had already been out at most of the parks mowing, so a lot of the trash had already been picked up, nothing major. So the Parks Commission, uh, member and I that were there, um, went and did McKnight between 36 and, the daycare, whatever that is. Is that 17th?
11th.
11th, 11th. Um, so we did that section there. Um, wound up getting two huge bags of trash out of there, so.
Awesome.
Did a little bit of extra work, so.
Good.
Went and did.
Thanks for volunteering.
And then I guess one other thing I will say is, um, I attended the 622 State of the Union, uh, for the school district last week and, um, sounds like they've got big plans for the school district and everything and it was well represented, so.
Thank you. General business.
Um, I helped out at cleanup days. It was lovely. It was busy. I went into the yard and, um, put some work gloves on and held some tires and held some trash. It was, I enjoy, it's one of my favorite events. These guys may think otherwise, but I enjoy doing it.
Maybe that's what this meeting's about.
Yeah, exactly.
She likes it too much.
Lot of people, I believe there was, was it 318 cars that we had come through, so. And, yeah, tennis team was on top of it. They rocked it, trucks in and out. Well-oiled machines, I think, once they get in there, they know what's going on, so.
When you said tennis team, I was thinking North Heights tennis. I'm like, have they volunteered for this?
And I also did the, uh, city cleanup and, uh, the city Public Works was, allowed me to get on a Gator and, and I, uh, worked the corner of First and 7th. And there was such a tie-up down there, we had to think quick and I got it all lined up where it worked out really well and the, uh, no complaints, no yelling and no screaming. That was the biggest thing. And I told them, people, it's just going to be a long wait, but just be patient. They said, what do we do if we have to go to the bathroom? I said, well, you're going to have to get out of line.
Great.
No, just same thing. Uh, participated in the city cleanup, uh, the spring cleanup day. Talked to Ava quite a bit about some, you know, change, or not changes, but some things we can do to improve it. Talked to Ron, you know, about some changes. So, um, yeah, I think it'll be, it's a good program. I think it's a great thing to do. Just got to figure out the, you know, what can we do to make it better, um, for everybody. Um, the park cleanup went well, like I talked about that, and then the, uh, 62 State of the Union thing. So, yeah.
What was that?
What was it?
Did they, yeah, can you?
So the, uh, district superintendent, uh, talked about the, it was at North. District superintendent talked about the schools, the improvements they're making to the schools, what they're doing with the schools. All the schools, including elementary schools and everything, finally have air conditioning. I know when my kids went to Cowan, they did not have air conditioning, so it was hot in there. But all the schools have air conditioning, all the improvements that they're making to the schools, to the programs. Just talking about what the future looks like for the school district and, um, you know, what we can do as cities. There were representatives from, you know, obviously me from North St. Paul, representatives from Oakdale and Maplewood there as well. Um, just talking about what we can do, um, to help. So, yeah, I thought it was really good.
Thanks for representing.
Mayor, I think I had one thing, um, that's worth bringing up here is we have a couple of areas around town that, uh, we're finding commercial vehicles parking and even private vehicles parking. So, which is one is like on north of 7th Avenue on Henry, along the Burwald property. We've got, uh, some semis that are parking there overnight, even dropping, um, just their trailers at times. Uh, we also have issues down there at McKnight Field to where, uh.
I see that in a lot. There's quite a few big panel trucks in there.
So we brought that to attention of the police department and they're going to follow up on that and, uh, start getting people to move along. Being that, uh, when it comes to commercial vehicles, there's a two-hour parking limit and then there's 12 hours for overnight parking. So there's things that we can do to get that moving. Just wanted to bring that up.
So what is it? 12 hours for residential or is it 24?
12 hours residential.
Every 12 hours, that vehicle has to be moved.
Residential and then two hours for a commercial.
That's our lots?
My understanding is in lots also.
Yep.
The commercial in our lots. It's 12 hours for residential in the lots. So it's on 3rd Street. And then, um, 7th and.
Henry.
Henry.
Henry. And then down at McKnight Park.
Money Fields, yeah.
I know down with the community center where that apartment is, there seems to be a lot out there all the time from the apartment, so.
Where?
The, where the, um.
Frankel Apartments?
Yeah. You got the, the community center there.
Oh, yeah.
That's the public lot, too.
Every once in a while, we're, we're hitting them as well, yeah.
Yeah. Great.
Yep.
Myself, I had a meeting with, uh, the local bars in town. So we got together and, um, they were just getting ready for, for summer and talking about the car show and how things went last year and this year. So there, there went very well. They got a good group. They want to make sure, you know, they're good to the North St. Paul. And, uh, we wanted the same way, make sure that there was nothing that was major that we needed to address and, uh, it went really well. So we're good there. So, yeah, if anything else, if nothing else I should say, can I get a call for a German, please?
So moved.
So move. Councilmember Woods?
Second.
Second. Councilmember McKenzie, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Next meeting is June 3rd. Have a great night.